I would like to call the regular meeting of the Wallingford Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission to order. The date is November 2, 2022, and the time is 7:05. Please join me in a pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ellie?
Ellie McKean.
Nick Kern.
Jim Vitale.
Deborah Phillips.
Jeffrey Nekio.
Michael Caruso.
Jim Heilmann.
Erin O'Hare, environmental planner.
Okay. We'll go on to the considerations of the minutes of the last meeting of October 5. Is there any comments regarding the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one correction.
Speak into the mic.
I do have one correction. On page five, unless someone can tell me I'm wrong, I don't think, under E, I don't think Mrs. Rizzi was here, Rizzi was here. I think it was just Wayne Rizzi. So where it says appearing were Mr. and Mrs. Rizzi, I believe it was just Mr. Rizzi.
I don't remember seeing her. She wasn't introduced, so.
Yeah, so it's just.
Just Mr.
We'll make that correction. Appearing was Mr. Rizzi.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting of October 5, 2022, be accepted as submitted with the correction on page five.
Second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Motion made in second, any discussion? Call for vote. Nick?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, going into old business, A 22-8.2, 1730 Tuttle Avenue, James Learned. You have input on this, Erin?
Yes, this is, if you recall, I presented this for the owner who was out of town last month, and we talked about it. There was photographs of this beautiful pond in very good shape, and he just wants to dredge the north end, distance about 18 feet by 30 feet down to just a foot, foot and a half down. That's all he wants to take, foot and a half, 18 by 30, where every now and then it silts in. This isn't, he's not creating a new territory. This is just getting the old silt out that comes in. Anyway, so we were just about to vote on it when Commissioner Kern said, Erin, I don't know, there's something about pond dredging, a new, some regulation, and maybe the DEP has extra hoop you have to jump through or something like that. So we postponed it till tonight, so, and this applies to another pond dredging application we're going to hear tonight, too. So anyway, so I researched the Internet. I came up empty-handed. I contacted the DEP Wetland Department. Haven't heard back from them in three weeks. That's kind of how it is. People don't, you know, they're, they're all at home now. They don't, they're not in their office, so they go in every now and then and get messages. I was disappointed with that. I emailed, nothing yet, but I found nothing. I did call four colleagues that do, that are wetland administrators in towns around here that I know them personally, so, and nothing. We came up with nothing, but there was something, and maybe this is, Nick, if this is what you were, you were talking about. I did go to a conference about eight years ago, and it rang a dim bell, and it had to do with contamination, that if you're dredging out something, you have to test these dredge materials. I don't know what the threshold was, you know, X amount of materials, or how deep you're going, or who is looking at this. I have yet to get any information on, well, does the state want this testing? Of course, this commission can require the testing if they want, anyway, irrespective. But that's as far as I got so far, and I would urge the commission to approve this, 1730 Tuttle Ave., tonight. And in this case, I don't think there's any contaminated soil to worry about in this particular situation on Tuttle Avenue. Very healthy pond, no algae, no invasives.
Do we know where the spoils are going to be dumped or trucked?
Yes, he's himself, the gentleman is going to do the work himself. He has his own equipment. He's going to take it up, his house is set on arise. He's going to take it up the driveway and use it around his planting beds, he said.
Okay, so there's, there's no reason not to act on this tonight?
None that I can see.
Nick, you okay with this? Okay, I'll, commissioners, any other comments from the commissioners? All right, then I'll entertain a motion regarding significant activity.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A 22-8.2, 1730 Tuttle Avenue, James Learned, pond dredging and vegetation removal be deemed not a significant activity.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in seconded, any discussion? Call for vote. Nick?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes. I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny this application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A 22-8.2, 1730 Tuttle Avenue, James Learned, pond dredging and vegetation removal be approved with the two conditions of approval on page two of the environmental planner's report of September 28, 2022.
Okay, is there a motion made? Is there a second?
Second.
Made in seconded, any discussion? Again, call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes. Approved. Okay, application A 18-1.2, 801 North Colony, Patens Brook, I am the Walrus LLC. Is this for activity or for?
No, what this was, this, this is the Patens Brook restoration River Corridor project. This was, we approved, this was approved April 2018. It's tied to the Tractor Supply development, and of course, the Tractor Supply was built straightaway, and the River Corridor project has, has moved ahead with fits and starts. It has its own bond. We released the bond on the Tractor Supply side. This, this one has its own bond. So it's a six-year program. It has had some problems. The ecologist Sigrid Godwa, who's involved with this, has been before the commission twice. We just got the five-year plan in. They're supposed to do biannual plans, so spring, fall. They've missed a few spring plans. The fall plan came in, it was, went out in your packet, not this Friday, the month before, so in September's packet. It's very dense. I mean, it's a good report. It covers everything, but it's a little hard to read, get through. I did, I did read it. I didn't, haven't met with her, but, but I will meet with her. I do want to say a few things. I don't know how many have had a chance to look at. A few things. I want to get through this six-year plan. I want it to be over, you know, it would be over next fall, and then we can wrap everything up, they can get their bond back. That's my goal. I'd like to see that. So getting there, let me just lay out, there's a few, one is, the plan is not, that's going on, is not exactly the plan we approved. Why? Things happened. Some human mistakes happened, sometimes the drought this summer happened, the landscaper cut down some good, beautiful landscaping plants they put in there, nursery plants they put in there. Different things happened. The Japanese knotweed was not cut as much as it was scheduled to be cut, cut and then treated, or just cut. They had a very specific plan. First you cut, then you treat with the chemicals, et cetera, whatever. But that's okay. Ultimately, as long as it gets a home, into, into the end game at year six, as if it's a good plan for that river, if it's a good vegetation, vegetative cover for that river, I'm happy. I wanted the commission to know it's not exactly the plan that was approved six years ago, number one. Number two, and I've got photographs, I went out there, I'd like to show them to you, it's not maybe what you guys envisioned, or even I envisioned. So we have the opportunity to tinker a little bit, maybe with the plan. Maybe we want to do a site visit out there. It's the kind of thing, when you drive by at 25 miles an hour, doesn't look that great, but when you read the report, and you're a botanist, and, you know, she's talking about, oh, these wonderful native wildflowers have come in, and this came in, and that came in, and all this, it's looking good. You under, you can understand it, but with a drive-by, I'd like to show you these, if I may pass them out.
So, but where are we right now? What are we trying to accomplish tonight?
I think I'd like, I'm recommending, it can wait, but it's a good time of the year to go out there, to go out there and look. You can go on your own, or we can go as a commission. Is this what we want it to look like? Because I hear complaints that it's, doesn't look good. From a ecological botanist point of view, it looks okay. Okay, not aesthetically, it doesn't aesthetically look good. I will totally agree with that. So it's, it's, we have to decide what we're going to do with it. I don't know if we want to call on some, an outside review on it, or to just, it's also that balance between what's good for the environment versus what's, what maybe people want to see. People drive by there every day, you know, there's a lot of traffic going by there.
The drive-by every day is not what we're trying to accomplish, the, what were we trying to accomplish? To stabilize the banks of the brook and control the flow? We're not, we're not really out there designed to make it look beautiful, are we? We got rid of the knockweed, which is good, and there's other invasive species.
You know, you bring up a good point, Jim. It rings a bell from six, five years ago when we approved this. We wanted to accomplish what you just said. The applicant had hired these botanists, a good team, Reema is a good, they're good, they're good ecologists, good botanists, and they, it was their intention to revamp this corridor, get rid of all the nasty invasives, let's make it a healthy corridor, a healthy ecosystem. That was their intent, and they set out to do that. We, the commission didn't ask for that. They set out, it was a, it was a, it's what they pride themselves on. They can turn a site around. They're known, you know, them and some other firms can take an overrun site and turn it around, and they set out to do that, okay? It was a little different from what maybe Tractor Supply might want, but they, the property owners retained them to do a six-year plan, which we approved. So I'm, I'm kind of looking for direction of how I should take this. I do know I want some accounting about the number of plants. It's a little confusing about it, how many more plantings are coming in? They lost a lot with the drought. A lot of people in their gardens lost a lot of plants this summer with the drought. So I'm, I'm looking for some direction on how close to the original plan we want this to be.
My, my opinion was the plan was too aggressive five years ago. It didn't make sense in that corridor to try and do what they were trying to do, but it was their plan, and they were going to submit all these different things every year in everybody's report. So here we are, five years later, and they're getting close, they want their bond back, but I don't see where, what would we do if they hadn't submitted the report? What would we have required? Not the report, if they hadn't submitted the plan with that extensive landscaping along the brook, what would we have required? We wouldn't have acquired, required all that.
Yes and no. It's coming back to me.
Uh, not yes and no.
It was also driven by Tractor Supply that wanted it to be seen.
Well, there's, that's their business, they wanted to be seen. What would we have required? We wouldn't have required the knockweed to be eliminated, and we wouldn't have required a lot of that vegetation off the side of the banks.
Right.
It was holding the banks together, but their plan wanted all this.
Right.
So I don't think we should be reinventing the plan. I think we should get the bare minimum, at a minimum, the bare necessities to control the bank.
And that's, that's, I think they might have achieved that.
Well, that's it. They, they're not going to eliminate the, the, you're not going to be able to see Tractor Supply like you're looking down your front lawn. It's not going to be that kind of thing. Plus, they got another building there blocking half the view anyway now. So I, that's, that's my opinion. Now, we all can stop by, it's easy enough to stop by there, either from the Tractor Supply side or from the Colony Street side.
And like I say, to repeat, I do want to make a point of talking with them or meeting them out there, either one, to find out, are they done planting? Are they going to replant? Are they going to wait till the spring to see what died over the winter and replant? I'm a little unclear on that. And the other thing is, I think it'd be a good idea at the end of this, for them to submit a plan for the property owner, hey, you got to keep on top of this, you can't just let it run wild for the next 20 years.
I don't know. Commissioners, what do you think, Ellen?
So when you said that some people are complaining about the way it looks, who exactly is that? Is that just Tractor Supply people?
Oh, no, 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 it wasn't Tractor. It was general public, or some of the commissioners now and then will bring it up, but, and town people, town, people I work with in the town, personnel.
I, I recall, I was really impressed with their plan. It was very ambitious, but like Jim says, I think they're, I think that what they've done, while it may not be exactly what they planned, has been pretty good.
When you read the report, it, it makes you understand it better, what you're, all that green stuff you're looking at when you drive by.
Nick, Thomas?
Erin, you gave them five or six years to put this in place, right? We're in the fifth year now, so they've got another year left to do what needs to be done. As far as the plants die, and that's their responsibility. If they die, then they need to replace them, which I'm sure they have some kind of a contract with the supplier. The ones that die, they replace. But I think it's all, it's in your hands come next year, or next summer, spring. When they come to you, you tell them that this is what they offered us, this is what we want to see, or they need to come back in front of us with an alternative plan to what they actually want to do. Because as far as I'm concerned, I'd like to see what they put in place five years ago. They said they do this, this, and this. They got rid of the knotweed, but if you drive by there and look down, and there is kind of a messy, but it's always been a messy mess. So, I mean, you're going to have to be the guide to this. You're going to have to tell us what you want to see. If you're comfortable with what's going on, then we're going to agree with it, then we'll do that.
Deb?
No comment.
Jeff?
No questions, no comment.
Mike?
No comments.
Jimmy?
No comment.
So, basically, the commission should go there and just see what's been done now. And if they recall from five years ago where the whole thing was knockweed and swiping, I remember chuckling to myself the swiping with the mitt on the stalks of the knockweed, but apparently it worked. They went through and they did all of it, and it did work. That stuff is nasty stuff. Okay, you got your guidance?
Okay, should I put it on the agenda for next time, or?
Well, I don't know what information you're going to have for next time, but what?
Oh, no, I just thought feedback from the commission, but we could put it on next spring, just what, they're, they're going to do a report next spring, and I'll meet with them in the next month to, about what they handed in.
All right. Application A 22-9.2, 119 Quigley Road, Matthew Turner. You've got this one, too?
I believe he's, he was going to be out of town, so, on business, so he asked me to speak for him. Now, what this is, is, okay, here, the applicant originally applied with one plan, then he didn't want to wait on his fencing, so the fencing part, we looked at that, yes, it was going to be, be 15 feet away from the wetland line, it's in the upland review, no issues, so yes. So it was approved administratively by Chairman Vitale, that piece, the, just new fencing on one side of his property. Okay. Then when I met out, met with him out there, I said, I don't, I don't think, I'm going to recommend to the commission that they don't approve your grand plan. His grand plan was to remove all the understory vegetation in the wetlands, but leave the trees, because, I don't know, that's what he wanted. And I said, I'm going to, they might approve it, I don't know, you can, they might want to come out here and look at it, I don't know, but I'm going to recommend against it. It was, we're talking about in the wetland portion of his property. So then I, I guess he cogitated on that, and he came back a few weeks later and said, look, Erin, I want, forget, forget that, I'm not going to do that. All I want to do is take out the understory in the upland review area, which is on the left side of his property. And if you look on what I sent out originally, I guess it was the August packet, might have been the September packet, anyway, it shows his plot plan of his property, it shows it bows out. So he's got this very straight, flat lawn behind his house, but it bows out on the left side. He wants to eliminate the bow. There's no trees, there's just shrubs. I'm okay with it. Since he revised it, he's not going to go forward with his, he's not even going to attempt to go forward with his wetland, making a park out of the wetland area. So I'm okay with administrative approval on that.
Is the commission, comments from the commission? Mike? Jeff?
No comments.
Jimmy?
No comment.
Deb?
No comment.
Erin, you're saying then is that he wants to take the lower wetland vegetation out?
Well, he does, he did originally. Now, he scrapped that, because I told him I wasn't going to recommend it to you guys. So he, and I explained to him why, and explained to him the, you know, the ecological value of all this. So he's just going now to remove the understory vegetation in the upland review area. There's, there's no really, there's no trees. Might be one tree in the upland review area. On the left side of his property, it's about 30 feet by, from anywhere from five to 15 feet. It just, it bows out. He wants a square back lawn. He wants it square. So this will just let it be square without interfering with the wetlands. It's right, it's up to the wetland line.
Are you, are you comfortable with letting them take it out?
Yes, up to the wetland line.
Ellie?
So he'll be making that lawn? That'll become lawn?
Yes.
Does he fertilize it?
There's a, oh, I didn't, I, I'm sorry, I didn't ask him that, but there's a photograph of his lawn.
I see the photograph, yeah.
Yeah, so it, it just continues the line.
Yeah, I would just be concerned that he's going to end up treating for a lawn in, right up to the wetland. I mean, the whole idea of the upland review area is a buffer, and then he's kind of, you're letting him take that away. That's all.
Well, that was, that was the previous application, the fencing. Wait a minute, let's, okay. Interesting question about the, what are you talking about, like fertilizer application, Ellie?
Mm-hmm, or any other kind of nonchemical.
Are we still on number three?
Yes.
All right, please.
The other being is, we still have a biofilter going on with the grass being planted there. It depends what's being spread. All right, there's a couple of things that just came up. The, Erin, the memorandum from October 28th regarding application 22-92-9.2, are we installing another fence on this property also?
No, there's only one fence, and it was already installed when it got, like, a week after it got its administrative approval.
Administration approval, so it really shouldn't be, is this the same application?
No, yes. I only had him apply one time.
But he already got, he got, he got approval on that one time?
He got approval, he had a, a two-part application. One was the, in this first app, original application, there was the fence on the left, and there was the clearing out the understory of the wetlands. Okay, he got his fence on the left, then it was just clearing out the understory in the wetlands, and I said, no, no. So he says, okay, okay, and he backed off, and he revised his application, we're just going to, he's just going to clear out in the upland review area where it bows out from the wetlands.
Well, I tell you, I don't, I don't know how you can have a two-step application and give them approval for administration approval for half of the application. Now you're going to get, recommending administration approval for the other half. Maybe it'll work out, but.
Or just approve the whole thing. I mean, at, at this point, it makes no difference if you go, if the commission's going to move forward with it tonight, it makes no difference if you do.
Well, if we try to be accurate on these things.
You can go ahead with the, approve the application.
Well, he's talking about installation of fencing on sideline.
That already happened, yes, that happened.
It's not going to happen more? That's it?
No, no, it's done. It was done on early October.
All right, so he's not going to put any more fence up?
Oh, no, he's all set. He's all set with that.
Okay, what would the, so are we voting on this or granting administration approval for the second half?
It could go either way. At this point, it's the same difference. He was hoping maybe it could happen before tonight, you know, but it's fine.
What would the commission like to do? Vote on it or grant administration approval?
I think all it needs is administrative approval.
Okay, Jim?
I agree.
Jim?
I'm okay with that, Jim, as long as somebody, Erin's going to make sure there's not more take, taken away there, and the fence, another fence is going to go up on the other side. Just not.
It's a neighbor thing, yeah, so he's, he's cool with the one fence.
Go for it. Okay, they granted administration approval then. All right. Okay, application A 22-9.3, 171 North Plains Industrial Road, Polish National Alliance.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, are we going with administrative on that?
Yes.
Okay. I do have it now. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, all. Good.
How are you?
Good, how are you? Microphone, and of course, name for the record, all that good stuff.
Roman Rosinski.
You can pull it to you, you know, Roman, the microphone will move. Well, sure.
If I could hear you, please.
There's another one.
Roman Rosinski, environmental analyst for the PNA, that's an advisory aspect.
Good. So I gather you want to dredge a pond, is that the concept here?
Well, this is, this is the concept that we, they, they looked at an alternative product plan for the, as opposed to the wet dredging that was proposed by another, another company, and I had come, been approached by Jim, John Zalinski, if there was any possibility I'd be just taking a look at it. And there is a good possibility, and I did. And from that point, I gave him an alternative to reclaim the pond and not do a wet dredging, but a dry dredging process. And tonight, we're looking at trying to get approval of Phase 1, which is in the note of the original document, but what was proposed was to the Pond Committee. The president and the Pond Committee brought, brought a forth to the inland wetlands regarding a, as a foot, as a, as a point of being able to get the, get the project started. And in effect, we would like to do a preliminary Phase 1A, which would be the clearing of the southeastern side of the, of the original pond, which is, and the, the original wetland flagging would, would remain, and the confines of the pond would be the same. The only thing that we are now looking at is to bring back the functionality and the quality of the water, and intercept the sediments that do come down from the Patens Brook, and then it obviously gets into a floodplain and overtops and brings the. obviously gets into a flood plain and over tops and brings the sediment load to the, to the pond. This has happened over several years. Utrification of this pond is significant. We've gone from 1.2 acres in size to about 0.4 in standing open water, which varies in depth from about six inches to approximately three feet, as it stands right now. And the proposal in the long term would be to dredge it, take out about 2,000 square yard, cubic yards of material, store it on site, de-water it, and utilize the fill on site, and basically bring this up to a level of a primary treatment under the Connecticut DEP Stormwater Manual, which was in the old, the earlier document, and then stage and profile the bottom. So it's more functional, and it'll provide a better environment ecologically for all aquatic and terrestrial plants, and, and a habitat for animals.
And where'd you say the source of water was from?
The source is, as you know, the entire area, all the way down to, I would say, the old Grants or, well, I'm really dating myself now. Down to Sam's is an outwash plain from glacial deposition. It's very droughty, it's a lot of sands.
But that doesn't, that doesn't feed this end of that sand flats.
No, but, but what I'm saying is that the, the entire area is, is receiving, any low point is receiving spring-fed waters.
Would you call it spring-fed or groundwater?
It's both.
All right, so, so tonight, you're looking for, in the map that we have here, just the yellow strip, the ones in front of you?
Yes, sir.
That, to clear cut that of vegetation so you can function at working the pond?
It's a selective cut. It's grubbing, not, not grubbing, but there's no clearing those, exposing those soils. It's just taking vegetative cover down so we can better assess and evaluate, and have the contractors come in, be able to tell us what they're capable of doing. We're looking at saving specific trees all along its edge, and with the, if we're dredging, the machines have to be able to do a swing to get the material out of the pond and get it in depth and profile it accordingly. And we, we will be going to the de-watering measure up in, up in the north of number one, and de-watering measure number two, which is the, underneath the Connecticut Guidelines for ENS Control under, under dredging.
You're going to pump a lot of water.
Hopefully not. There's not a lot of water in there.
In the groundwater in that area?
There is groundwater in that area. That's what we're going to hope to be able to reclaim and have the, have the water quality increase, and also the capacity for flooding and storage.
But you're going to, you're going to try and de-water the ground while you work this pond, is that correct?
No, we're going to, I, were you familiar with the first round of the report that I sent to the PNA Pond?
Not really.
Okay, well, it gives a whole process of, of how you go about dredging, doing a dry dredge. I, I think that would be beneficial for you to be able to...
So that's what you're going to try, dry dredge it?
Dry dredge it.
Okay. Erin, comments?
Well, I met with the applicant's team last week, because, and I went out there, I mean, it's in my report, my report went out in Friday's packet, pictures. And I've been familiar with this pond. There was different permits on the site, as I put in my report. There's three different permits over recent times, the last 10 years, that were issued to the PNA folks. So I've been out there quite a lot. It, it is remarkable how much this has silted in over the short time I've known it, known the area. And so I can understand why they want to dredge it. The plan that was, that Roman did, the concept plan that went out a month ago in your September packet, which is this, this, this is the drawing that was attached to that, like, 20-page concept plan. This is very ambitious.
Yeah, but we're talking about this tonight.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm, so this is very ambitious plan. This is just a rough concept. It's going to need a lot of detail. So they're saying, "Yeah, we understand that, Erin. We're going to need survey, we're going to need engineering, we're going to, we understand that, but we want to get started." So obviously, the engineering, et cetera, is going to take a lot of time, and all the various permitting that they may or may not need from the local, state, whatever. So they said, "We want to get started." So I said, "Okay, you've got to make that clear to the commission, that you only want to do Phase One A," and then they, they came back with this to make it clear. This is all that they want to do. They'd like you to approve it tonight, just Phase One A, just clearing the vegetation along the eastern side of the pond by up, up the building side, where the buildings are, and make those two de-watering areas. So they'll be, the de-watering areas would just be cleared. They wouldn't be made into a sump. Later on, they'd be made into a depression. Right now, they're just to be cleared. And so, as Roman explained, why, why do this? Well, one is, they'll see the area better. They'll see what they're dealing with. Right now, you try to go out there, I couldn't walk to these wetland flags. It's a thicket. It's a dense thicket. And so they'll clear it up to the wetland line, or maybe a few feet from the wetland line. They'll be able to see it better. And then, as Roman said, have the various prospective contractors come in and say, they'd say, "I'd come in this way," or "I'm afraid my vehicles are going to get stuck over here, so I want to go around this way," or whatever they're going to say. And that would help design the next phase. They're thinking that all these phases would be one application, and I said, "I don't know, you might run out of time," because we got the statutory time of the 65 days, and with extensions, another 65 days. And, you know, maybe there's a significant impact, public hearing in the middle of all this, so you might run out of time. You might make two applications, whatever, whatever that might be. But tonight, they would be happy if they just get the first.
That's it. Any comments, Ally?
No.
Nick?
Erin, do they need a deep permit to be doing this?
That's a good question. Diversion permit, I actually asked the town engineer, and she said, "You've got to put it on the applicant. They've got to do the work. They've got to find out if they need a diversion permit from DEP, whatever kind of permit from DEP, Army Corps, or whatever they need. They have to establish that. That's part of the work that needs to be done."
Well, my understanding, and maybe I'm wrong, is that DEP doesn't allow these type of ponds to exist anymore because of the algae and the, the quality of the water's not there. Now, I know you're talking about being spring, spring-fed or ground-fed, but my concern is that, do they need a permit from DEP to actually do this?
Okay, I don't know what particular kind of permit, but I, it brings up another point I want to make. On the face of it, you, on a very simplistic level, this is just dredging a pond. Yeah, it's a big pond. Yeah, it's going to be 1.2 acres, but it's just a pond. But it's not like a farm pond or an isolated pond unto itself. This is a flow-through pond. The more I studied it, the more I realized, this is a flow-through pond. It's part of a large swamp flood plain, and it flows through. And yeah, once upon a time, somebody dredged out in the middle of it, made this pretty pond, but it, it's a dynamic system. So I don't know how DEP, if that would fall in the category you're referring to with an algal pond. I don't know. I think it, the water will, will move through this. I mean, Roman can maybe address that more, better than I can, but I don't see algae being such an issue, maybe. Although, I will say that sediment, sediment keep on coming in, that's an issue. Ongoing sediment load is an issue, from up above, coming down to the site.
Well, my other question would be the contaminants. You're talking about taking and dredging this area, stockpiling it. What, what, who has tested the soils to make sure they're just, they're qualified to be relocated on the property somewhere?
Well, right, that's what you brought up last month. Like, wait a minute, that got me thinking. May, pond contamin, testing of pond dredge materials for contamination. I don't know if there's a higher level for that testing requirements. I don't know at this point. I haven't heard back from the state. But sure, I'm sure they'd be willing to test that.
Well, I'd feel comfortable if you got something from deep saying that this, they authorized you to do this. You know, I'm not saying you're not qualified, but I just, I'm under the understanding that they're trying to discontinue all these little acre, acre and a half, two acres, no more dams and no more stagnant water. Because if you're, you're using the spring-fed in the summertime when the water, the water table is low, what's going to qualic this quality of water in the summertime, like this past summer? What kept this from getting algae and the water, the water quality being degraded because it didn't have adequate input for flow?
Well, if you take, if you take a look at what's, if you take a look at what's, what's the, the pond is receiving, there's a multitude of lawns, just the community usage itself that are, you know, it flows past community pool, goes through several areas of trucking, industrial areas and so forth, plus lawns. And then you do have runoff from the roads and so forth, most of which are, are volatiles, the petroleum products and so forth. But things that are of concern, that I used to work for the commissioner, under the Commissioner of DEP, and what they're looking at now, or had been, were the transport re-suspension of heavy metals and so forth, zinc and, you know, any, any leads and so forth. These things are sequestered because there are heavy metals, they fall to the bottom. They are bonded, and they do ionically, ionically bond to the soils. Hopefully, they don't transport. Problem with community pool is that they could not control the, not, not community, Community Lake, I'm sorry, I misspoke. They could not keep on going to sequester the heavy metals that were derived from the silver industry. Those are problematic, and they get re-suspended. So that's where the dredging stops. Now, I don't know about the smaller ponds. I have, I had left the, the agency support system in 2019. So when did this come up, Mr. Curran?
I believe it was right around 2020 is when they, we had another application where it was a farm pond. It was spring-fed, and they told him he had to fill it in. He couldn't, no longer existed. So I'm just...
Okay, I, I understand. I can certainly research that for the PNA. But, you know, if you take a look at farm ponds, they have a lot of pesticides, herbicides, and such as atrazine and so forth for apple, apple farming and so forth. And that sometimes stays bonded. When you disturb the soils, that's when you have problems where it's going towards the Quinipiac River, which is an EPA super, super interest river.
You talk about, are these soils going to be tested that you're going to stockpile?
We can. If that's, if that's a parameter that you wish to have done, we certainly can have it, have it tested by the, the labs in New Haven.
It's not our position to tell you to test it or not test it. That's why I feel better if DEP is involved, even with a letter saying that you're, you're authorized to do what you want to do. You gave them your presentation, and they agree to it. They bless it, then that's fine. But there's too many particulars here that you're not talking about. I don't want to see any spoils or any contaminated soils head to the Quinipiac, because it's already a site that needs tending to.
When you say spoils, what are you referring to? The soils that are, the dredged material that's coming out?
The material you're going to dredge out, that's considered spoils because you're removing it from the original site that it was...
It's being sequestered on site, sir.
You do what?
It's going to be sequestered on site.
It's going to be requested on site, but how do you know you're not, it's like with Community Lake, you're not going to stir up what's, there was an oil spill, or you talked about trucking or community pool. How do you know there's not stuff already in there that's laying down the bed of this, this area? Because you just said it all comes down from the north.
Then you're telling me you would like to have a bathymetric assessment of the, of the material that's inside the pond at this point?
I'd like to just see a letter from DEP saying that you can do this without any...
I would say, in all, in all honesty, the DEP, you've just heard how much they respond. I have always had that problem myself, trying to represent the 43 townships that I did throughout southwest Connecticut. And they were very unreliable, to say the least. But I will certainly pursue it.
Okay. So much of this application is associated with, with what DEEP rules are at the moment. If they say, "Go ahead and, you know, we have no issues with the pond," they've got to have some kind of manual somewhere on their pond dredging, I would think. I guess not, huh?
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
There, there might be other individuals underneath the stormwater permitting that will come into some providence of that. But you'll, if you take a look at some of the, the dam that was there, it was registered by DEP. It became, it fell into disarray. It is no longer functional. It, there are some remnants of the cobbled dam. There are remnants of the concrete pore that they did as a fix, and they are all gone. There are no restrictions on that pond to impound anymore, other than the conveyance that was the original channel out of, out of the dam. They've given up on, on the dam.
Who's giving up? D and A? DEP?
DEP.
They haven't given up. They've just decided that, that the, they no longer want to see dams in place. They want to see the dams discontinued because the quality of the water, and there's other influencing things that are happening. That's why they stopped. I know because...
They've abandoned that, that dam.
Well, Community Lake is a prime example. There was a beautiful lake down there before. They said, "We couldn't put the dam back in." After we spent hours and thousands of dollars to research putting the dam back in, they say, "We don't want you to have a dam there." So now we got two swamp ponds that...
Well, that's a result of a fundamentally flawed assessment and evaluation by Army Corps, DEP, and RCS.
Well, if you can show me, and I'm not trying to pinpoint you.
No, 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 I, I truly will exercise every possibility to find out if there is any input that they would like to have, or some guidance. But, you know, I've never really seen them stepping forward.
Okay. But as, as discussed tonight, it's primarily the selective removal of, removal of selected vegetation around the perimeter of the pond.
Right.
And, and the de-watering areas, you want to selectively remove some material there, or some...
Oh, no, no.
Rush.
Those areas are going to receive the dredging materials to de-water and allow water to go back into the pond.
I think you've got to function the microphone, it's not coming through clear in the office.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Okay. What this is, is the de-watering measures are set forth by the erosion, the 2002 Connecticut Erosion Control Guidelines. And what we, what they are, what they serve as is a staging area to allow the materials that are taken out, the organics, the sub-aquatic soils, all the way down to the levels that we don't even know at this point until we really have a better assessment of those soils, as to what they are, if they're sellable. It reduces the cost to the PNA. If they're not sellable... It reduces the cost to the PNA. If they're not sellable, they need, they, and they need to be taken off site. If they have a contamination, they also have to have that assessment then.
All right. But, but you want the permit to clear cut that so you can use that eventually as a staging area for the spoils?
Yep. DWM one area to the north of the pond is just an open area already.
Okay.
The DM, DWM number two in the south is, has probably approximately eight to 12 trees that, that are pines that are...
And you're, and you're requesting to remove those?
Yes.
That's where I'm trying to get to identify exactly if that's part of your request tonight.
Yes.
My experience in that area, you're going to hit gravel probably before you get to the bottom. I mean, when they built the parkway, they dug a three acre gravel pit right at the end of Lone Place Road, not, which is now an industrial highway, North Plains Industrial Highway, North Plains Highway. All right. Okay. So the request tonight is to deal with just this yellow area and they want to remove selective growth so they can assess and address the problem or the issue with the pond. Has anybody got any questions regarding that? If not, you're all right?
I just have one question on DMW one. I see a thousand gallon grease by United Concrete approved equal. Is that a non-functional septic tank? Is that a grease trap, grease tank? What is that?
It's underneath the, the ledge side.
Right alongside of where his DWM one is.
That is off the northwest corner of the building. It points to the grease trap. And it is well over 75 to about 100 feet away from what is proposed to be the de-watering area.
Have you checked the elevation there to see that, is that a septic system or is that just a grease trap?
It's just a grease trap, according to, according to Ed Zavoski.
You're going to speak, you got to use the microphone.
Ed Zavoski, President of the PNA, Wallingford. So what we did is we, in order to comply for parking, we eliminated our septic system, put in sewer and grease trap for the new kitchen that we're going to have downstairs at the club. So we made sure that was a distance away. Roman addressed that when we came in, or he came in, and didn't see that as a problem. The towns inspected it, the health departments inspected it, so it's met approval.
In, in looking at the drawing that, I have the original, and that was given to me by Aaron on our meeting, the pump chamber, the invert is at 46 and field verified, and the pump chamber is at 50.5 top of it. The thousand gallon grease trap, grease trap by United Concrete are approved equals that pump chamber. So...
It's just a static tank then?
Is it a static tank? Yes.
Where does the sewer line come out of your hall?
Sewer line goes directly east off of that southern, that, that northwest corner and and goes out to North Plains High, North Plains Highway.
Okay, so it's going to be well away from your actual construction. Okay.
Okay. Then if, I'll entertain a motion to regarding...
Mr. Chairman, your question before to the commission was, was there any question with regard to the yellow area? Could we ask questions about the general project? I'm just curious as to the culverts that drain out of the area?
They're going to be back here multiple times.
Yes.
The next step, they're going to be back before us.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may say, they are looking for input tonight so they can steer their design. If you, just general input would be helpful.
Jimmy, how about we get through the yellow and we'll open for discussion?
What, please?
We get through this yellow site and then we can talk about discussion?
Oh.
Or do you want to?
No, I, I was just wondering why we had all this information and material like these pictures and what they imply about the project, that they're doing an overall general description kind of thing. I think curiosity, leaving that pond, there's two culverts. Is that correct? How does the pond drain and what direction? Does it go off to the west, southwest?
It goes through, through the south end of the, the structure. It's a six foot wide conveyance that goes underneath the, the high, the North Plains Highway. And it is not twin culverts. It's a five foot diameter round oval cover.
So it can accept a fairly significant flow. This pond properly set up would flush fairly well. And I think that may be a concern Nick brought up about algae formations. You look at it here, it doesn't look like it has an issue with algae. That might have something to do with the flushing capacity of this. Also, when you look at the aerial picture, I think it clearly demonstrates the source of sediments that come in. And you follow that and you look at the coloration of it, especially in the meandering areas. A lot of it looks very recent, which correlates to what Erin stated since she's been here. A lot of material has filled into this pond. So essentially what I hear being described by all of this is there are periods of time when there are significant flows that would come through here. So that if you look at the pond area and the area you're going to be dredging, the area where you have to do all this dredging obviously is where the velocity has stopped as this water flushes in during rain events that brings that sediment in there. And so when it loses velocity, it just builds up there. That's a lot of buildup in a short period of time. And when you look at the coloration in the pictures, it's fresh. It's fresh deposition. And it looks like a lot's coming from the activity right up on the corner there in the east corner of the whole property. My only other question has to do with what kind of depth would you be looking for in this pond for aquatic advantages?
Well, the presentation, as I, as I look towards the, the dry dredging, and I did it in stages, going from the southernmost end of the boat, the, the pond, which is the only open area that is, of open water. And that ranges from six to three feet at this present stage. The outlet right now with the drought was at 43.8 elevation. It was significantly different than any of the elevations that were here. Everything has A graded over several years. It's not something that's new. The vegetative cover for this pond is significant. And the water itself has, has been impacted by the shallowness, which is, pushes up the temperature and loss of dissolved oxygen for significant fish. The only thing I found in there was days, some leeches and some rather stout bullfrogs and a lot of snakes. Mr. Zavoski really likes sebbs, so I think they were imported into... But the, the entire area from the north, we are preserving a, the intent is to preserve a buffer area at the uppermost reaches of the, of the pond, which has formed a significant delta with some alder and some willow. And that's going to remain the same. Out of the 1.2 acres that the pond was originally, we're going to restore this back to 0.8 to 0.9 in acre size of water, open water, and increase the water. Now, from the upper stages of the pond, coming about to the halfway point, we're looking at probably three to five feet in depth. It's really, really trying to give a decent body of water. And it's going to be resultant, it's going to be affected by the amount of reach that we can and the equipment that we can bring in to really address taking out the material that has come into that and lowered the capacity of this pond. From that halfway point, we're going to do a pond profile on about a three to one slope to an area where you see the shallow pond area in the, in the drawing, the oval, oval end. That's going to go down another five feet from the proposed three foot depth that we found. So in all, it should be at low flow on the, I forgot the date that I did it. Low flow on that was done in July. And there was relatively no flow coming out of the pond, other than what was spring fed. And it had to be very, pretty good quality water because it was relatively clear. There was brown algae. I, I know that for a fact. Reeds were there. There are significant trackings of muskrat and stuff like that. But I would well imagine that when it comes to the springtime, you'll find other amphibians and turtles and snappers and so forth. Those, those will be, this area will be enhanced. It'll be a lot better ecologically. And the flow through and capacity of this will have a lot cleaner water exiting the pond and going towards the queue. From that, I, I dare say that, you know, the, the PNA is being diligent enough to want to resurrect this pond. It's a lot of money and it's something that they believe in fervently to be able to, once they get this up and running, to be able to share that with the community. And from what I understand, several events that are significant and will benefit not only members, but the community as a whole and surrounding townships. The intent here is to really reclaim what they have and get a functionality back that this pond has never seen in a substantial time. The bedloads that you're seeing, I would like you to really come out and take a look at the, I invite you on the part of the PNA, to come out and take a look at this pond because it has built up a significant delta. And the diversion that's already come in on high flows has split and gone, and gone along the western boundary. And it will continue to, to fill in and go to a marsh. And I think that is a huge waste of a significant natural resource in the water body. So I think you really have something here that could benefit not only the members, the PNA, but the town as a whole.
And the environment, certainly.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. What's, what's beautiful about it is the hydrology in the area is so advantageous for that kind of project. I think it's a win-win opportunity. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
You, everybody talks about flow through pond, flow through pond. And indications are it's doesn't, it's not part of the Patton Brook system. So I'd be very concerned about where this source of volume, high volume of water on this throw few, through, flow through comes from. Because you don't really have that big of an area that's feeding this pond. And you, what did you do with the storm drainage in the parking lot? Did you put those just into catch basins and put direct recharge? And there was no, no oil water separators to that system, just put it catch basins. But there's a, this whole issue about this flow through, and I'm not against the flow through. But it's, it can't be talked about the whole flood plain going all the way up to the old Grants or Kmart or where, Sam's.
Can I interject?
You said that.
I, I, I did.
Yeah.
And what, if you take a look at the, if you take a look at the topographic maps and the contributory area, you're looking at a substantial area.
Right.
That, that effect, Patton's Brook, is it Patton? I don't know. But what has to happen is that Patton's Brook comes across the top, the northern sector of the, of the PNA, PNA land.
Right.
It over tops when it has significant storm events. And unfortunately, it goes across and diffuses into these areas where Mr. Hyman is, is seeing fresh deposition. That is true. Those are transported and, and they break into braided streams that come in on a seasonal basis into this, into this pond. What we're trying to do is trying to intercept that so we can maintain it, so we don't have the loss of capacity again.
But those are only high flow events. They're not everyday throw, flow through. So the point is, don't misunderstand me. I think this is a decent idea, but I don't like the, the, the concept that it's all of North Plains that feeds it. I've spent a lot of time down in that area over the last 50 years. So between the gravel and the road cut across from Capital Drive and the gravel pit filling up, that gravel pit has a road in the bottom of it. You don't know it now, but there was a road in the bottom of that gravel pit there. So I just want to be sure that I understand where the inlet to this pond is coming from because it's not a direct inlet from Patton's Brook. Anyway, that's, that's another day of discussion. I think we are back looking for a motion regarding significant activity to the yellow area on this map. Again, cutting of selected vegetation to allow assessment of the contract.
So this isn't significant activity for the whole project, just?
This is just one tidbit of the phase. I think they're calling this Phase 1A. Now, is this application, Aaron, going to have multiple 1B, 1C, 1D? Or any future going to be another application?
Yes and no. It's up to them. I think they'll run out of time, but they...
I think this is your, this application is an application. From here on in, I think you've got a, you've got a lot of work to do to create the next application.
We understand that.
Then we get rid of the dredging. Because in the application, they're talking about, in that application, they're talking about improvements, vegetation removal and dredging. So there won't be any dredging done. It'll just be vegetation removal.
Just vegetation removal.
Okay.
On the east side of the pond, just the east side.
East side?
Yeah, just east.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A 22 dash 9.3, 171 North Plains Industrial Road, Polish National Alliance Lodge 513, Pond Improvements, Vegetation Removal, be deemed not a significant activity.
There's a motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Entertain a motion to approve or deny this application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A 22 dash 9.3, 171 North Plains Industrial Road, the Polish National Alliance Lodge 513, Pond Improvements, Vegetation Removal on the east side, be approved with the conditions of approval in the... in the October 28, 2022 Environmental Planner's Report.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, a second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a new application from Cho. That'll be addressed. I think we get into violations right now. And I think the primary violation at this time... Which one do you want to do first, Erin? Do you want to do South Turnpike or you want to get up to Schoolhouse Road?
South Turnpike's quicker.
Well, we can start with South Turnpike. Violation, South Turnpike Road, Carl Keslick, Little Kay's Landscaping.
This is the back page. This is number four, yeah. Number four and five, both. Four and five, items four and five on the agenda.
Good evening. How are you?
Okay. What's the status? You kind of promised you'd have that material out of there.
I talked to Sal the day after we had the meeting. And I called him to see what was going on. And he had no idea that you guys wanted it. He never said anything about having it removed.
Who's this, the owner?
Sal's the owner of the property I called originally to say, hey, let's put the woodchips down. He told me to...
You got to use the microphone. You got to get right in.
He told me to... He had no idea about removing any of it. He never said anything about entirely removing it because that would have been a waste of time for me on my end, doing it to begin with. So he said remove about six to eight inches of the depth because it was a little high and so forth. And then yesterday, I was contacted by his property manager, Tom, because he spoke with Erin to bring him back an additional 10 feet into the buffer or out of the buffer zone, which we started today because he contacted me around 2:00 today to do so. We were there about 3:30 till 5:30, clearing out that extra 10 feet of the buffer zone. But he saw no need to remove all of it because that was the whole point of it was to apply the woodchips to make it look more presentable than an abandoned lot and not waste my time for a month.
Go ahead, Erin.
Oh, okay. So the owner was disgruntled by, of course, this whole affair, the violation and so on, confused why it was put there in the first place if it wasn't appropriate. In other words, the contractor should have checked and said, is it okay to dump this in a wetland area here and such? Anyway, but now the owner understands everything and he wants it all out of there. So he sent his employee to see me, I guess, Monday, this fellow, Tom, who then contacted Carl. And Tom put... I drew a map for them. And Tom put the red flags in, right, Tom? And his folks did that? I saw them earlier today. So Carl called me around, I don't know, 1:00 or something, said, we're going to get out. Did you get a chance to go down there today?
Yeah, we were there from about 3:30-ish to 5:30.
Okay. And did you get it out of the buff?
We got most of it, some of it. We didn't finish all of it. We'll return tomorrow, obviously, because it got dark.
And I cautioned Carl not to grub any... You know, not to dig up any dirt when he's removing this. This is pallet mulch. This isn't regular tree bark mulch. And I hope you did that, Carl. I hope you paid heed to that. You know, we don't want any dirt dug up.
No, yeah, like I said to you on the phone, we're not going to go down to bear-dirt because it wasn't bear dirt to begin with. And also, that was your concern, not to have it be bear dirt. But we'll go down as much as we can with the machine, obviously.
Okay, so where are we at?
I haven't seen it, but it sounds like they made a start. I think the owner was real adamant to finish it. So I'm glad that he started. The remaining thing is there is still mulch in the floodplain, but that's really a planning and zoning issue that I discussed that with the owner. And he's got to get it out of the floodplain as well. But planning and zoning will pursue that.
All right, so that violation stays status quo, commissioners? Agreed?
All right, could you vote on that? The law department likes me to have you vote on it.
Why don't you make a motion to...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the notice of violations on South Turnpike Road, South Turnpike 2 LLC and Carl Keslick remain.
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay. While you're up there, you were somewhat involved up on 68, 67 Schoolhouse Road?
Correct.
Did you provide the brick for that project?
I did not.
So no one knows where the brick came in from? What did you do up there? You spread it?
No, we started spreading it, yeah. But there's obviously piles that are still not spread.
But you don't know where the brick came from?
It came from a different contractor that did not know of...
All right, very good.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, notice of violation, 67 Schoolhouse and 69 Schoolhouse Road. Amazing, no one knows where that brick came from.
I know, right? Nobody's got a name for that contractor?
And where else is violation?
Do you have enough copies for everyone?
Paper airplanes. Jesus Christ. Oh, I know. I see the signature here. Okay. As we know, we have a little issue at your yards. And you have just passed out a Ecological Services Report. But this is the first time you've handed it out, correct?
Yeah, we just got it today.
So...
If you folks could identify yourselves, please.
Gabrielle Varelli, 69 Schoolhouse Road.
Matthew Lewis, 69 Schoolhouse Road.
Michael Gerace, G-E-R-A-C-E, 67 Schoolhouse Road.
Michelle Gerace, G-E-R-A-C-E, 67 Schoolhouse Road.
Okay. There's been a lot of discussion in regards to this situation. And it's pretty well determined that it all seems to come right back to the Wetlands Commission on whether you can keep the product there or you can't keep the product there. Now, we know we discussed a soil scientist to determine where the flags are, where the wetlands are. And I believe this is what this report says.
Yes.
All right? So at this point, I think Erin's got to go out and read the report, study the report and investigate the site, correct, Erin?
Yes, if I could ask, I haven't read this yet. Did she flag the wetlands? Like with little, like red flags or yellow, orange flags or anything?
No.
And is she going to?
She was going to use the existing areas that we have. She's recommending that we pull the north side back 20 feet and then towards the backside of our house, pull back 20 feet. She's recommending mitigation rather than pulling up the soil, possibly doing more harm to the environment.
I don't think that's the best route to go. I mean, at first, you got to have to determine what was wetlands that was filled, then the mitigation, if there is one. But you can't ask for mitigation when you don't know if you're allowed to keep it there.
Did she tell you where she thought the wetlands ended? Like behind your house, like 20 feet, 40 feet or?
She didn't put like exact phrasing like that. But I mean, she did core, you know, a little bit just to kind of show us like the surrounding areas and the areas that she could get to.
Sorry. She's planning on restoring 6,000 square feet of the wetland area, which she feels would be suitable for this. And she's going to make a plant proposal, bring in all of the native vegetation to continue it to grow.
The information that Erin had last meeting and showed the map from the original subdivision, it looked like the builder of the house already went past his approved line from the state of Connecticut. So you had, I don't know, 20 or 40 feet of backyard that wasn't supposed to be there. Now, you're, through her supposedly, is recommending to continue that system.
On the second paragraph in the beginning, it says...
Well, I'm not going to get into this because they hand out this tonight. They hand out this tonight, and it doesn't mean anything until we read it and she studies it. And there's not a map, a site plan. There's not a site plan of yours property to see what she's really referring to. I mean, she says 20 feet, remove it here. I mean, it does say, if you read it quickly in the second paragraph, I determine that approximately a half-acre filled area, mostly within the northern, most in the more northern lot is fact jurisdictional wetland. Without getting in to study it, I don't think I'm going to take that time. Because it isn't going to make any difference until it gets studied with Erin. And you may want to get Siglen out there.
Yes, I think if I go out there with Siglen, she can show me where she thinks the wetland boundary is. I'll give her a map, a base map, if she doesn't have one. If you... Did you give her a map, you guys?
They were from 1978, the maps that we have, so no.
I didn't give you a current map? Yeah, I did.
The one that was created from drawings and things? That's not...
Okay. All right, I'll give you a...
No, we didn't give her any.
Okay, I can give you a base map, a plain one with nothing on it. And then she can draw in, approximate where the line is. Where in her estimation where the wetland line is. I suggest that I could do that next week. We could get on this.
Well, see how you make out with her. Because what is her credentials? That's the other thing.
This is the same person who's doing the River Carter Project on Tractor Supply?
Yes, I realize that. But is her credentials a wetland scientist?
She's a certified soil scientist.
She's got those credentials?
Yes.
On the last page, it says she's an ecologist.
A botanist, a registered soil scientist.
Yeah, maybe like the commission has requested that they retain a soil scientist. I am both a soil scientist and plant ecologist. Four or five lines down.
Well, she needs to break it down because she's all over the paper here. 20 foot here, 30 feet there, half an acre. So you guys, maybe Erin should be there and you can break it down to what she... By reading this, excuse me, it doesn't tell us anything. She wants you to go out there and take the grass out, weed. She's talking about weeding and grass.
Yeah, that's to, I guess, preserve...
Microphone, we got to really...
Preserve the area once it's created. So invasive weeds and roots don't...
She's a long ways from worrying about the weeds and grubbing.
Yeah, I mean, we just got this today, too. You know, we've been, this whole month, we've been like... It's almost like we're trying to contact the president, trying to get...
It's been a disaster.
Get somebody to be our soil scientist. I mean, we had Jim come out that first time. And it's been like pulling teeth. We're calling the guy. He doesn't answer. He sends us a price, but then never says he's going to come out and help us. You know, it's like, it's really, it hasn't been too pleasant of an experience. I mean...
Try calling a plumber.
Yeah.
See how long you wait.
He has one in the family.
They still don't answer.
We understand that. But to try and resolve anything tonight is just a waste of everybody's time until this is digested and Erin gets into it with Siglen and go from there. So I think it just stays status quo. I guess we got to vote on the violation staying in effect for both properties?
What about the legal issue with it? Because I did speak with Janice as well.
The legal issue is what?
Because we were misinformed from the get-go.
Doesn't make any difference because if you called the town, you should have asked for the wetland department if you were asking about a wetland issue.
And instead of being told that if you have squishy sneakers, you have wetlands, the town should be directing people to contact a soil scientist or say...
That's been changed. That policy's been changed. But what did the town tell you that you had? There was no wetland violations on your site?
Mr. Chairman?
That doesn't mean that there wasn't wetlands on the site.
But it doesn't say that there are either?
No.
It's a non-answer.
Well, your deed says it. If your attorney gave you the full deed...
Which we don't have.
Well, that's unfortunate.
Attorney Small did give us a memorandum that said legally, there is a very substantial burden to prove that a person misled them by, was a town official.
So you don't have anybody's name in the planning and zoning department? You don't have anything other than you talked to them? You talked to that department? And they said there was no violations on record? So that side, that side of the legality doesn't hold much this time, unfortunately.
Any of you know who you called in the town?
Well, I mean, like we spoke last meeting. I mean, I think I actually spoke to Erin when, you know, she had said there's no wetland violations. But I mean, you know, we had said, oh, you know, it's misinformation or maybe somebody's asking the wrong question. But I mean, I asked, is there wetlands? I mean, her response should be, I don't have any violations, but I could come out and take a look. Or maybe you should hire a soil scientist, not really just kind of push me on my way.
You believe you talked to Erin regarding this?
Yeah, I mean, last meeting. I mean, when she said the exact words of, I don't have any history of violations, it basically triggered me. And I even said last meeting, I said, I very well might have spoken to Erin because I was, I probably called the wetlands department myself.
I'm going to burn Janice's letter also because she specifically mentions that.
Microphone, microphone.
Mike? She specifically mentions that comment. The taxpayer has called the office and asked why it wetlands. Instead of getting a comment, come in, let's talk about this, let's look, check your deed.
They get a non-answer. And as a common person, not as a commissioner, looking at this, that non-answer, to me, looking at it from their standpoint, is a clearance that there's no wetlands. That's not an answer. And it's even been admitted in Janice's letter. That's not appropriate for the town professional to provide an answer like that to the homeowners. It's just not professional and it's not appropriate. They should have been directed to come in, check their deed, a whole bunch of things. Never mind getting into the closing and how they probably... Were you even aware of the wetlands on your property? Would you have bought it if you were given that map that showed you you had no backyard and you're paying taxes on it? Of course not.
I would have had to reassess.
Of course not.
I would have to think about it for sure.
The system has failed these people. They're in a bind at this point. This commission needs to be very flexible with them. We can't send these people into bankruptcy. They took a home equity loan to do this? We can put a hammer down on these people for this. This has to be a kid club operation. The policy of advising people there's no wetlands violations, that cannot stand. That cannot be an answer to a homeowner in this town. It has to be yes, no, come in with your maps, let's talk about it. That's a non-answer. It's just unacceptable.
Any other comments?
Just to add to the memorandum, it does say that said, "When considering the appropriate remediation order, the commission may, in its discretion, take into account the evidence of the owner's good faith belief that they did not require a permit." And I'm taking that into consideration at this point.
Excuse me.
Go ahead, Ally.
Who was the contractor who dropped the brick?
We came home from vacation and we had brick. We're not sure.
You randomly got and you... Because I'm not sure where this lack of information is actually coming from, because we've got a big hole in your good faith effort, from what it looks like right now.
What hole? What's that?
That would be not underst, that would be the evasive, we don't know where this fill came from.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, you, we, they hired a contractor.
I hire a general contractor. I don't ask him where the electrical wire is.
Mike, Mike, one at a time. Either they talk, you talk, one at a time. Go ahead.
Oh, I was just referencing, if I hired a general contractor for my house, I wouldn't ask him where the wire came from or...
But your general contractor indicates that he did not arrange to have the fill or he did not bring the fill?
He, he brought fill and whoever else he contracted...
Can we ask Mr., Mr. K. if he arranged to bring the fill? Maybe we needed to be a little clearer with that question as well.
He's already in hot water.
Just named for the record.
Carl Kiesle, Little K's.
Where'd the fill come from, Carl?
I brought in fill, like dirt fill before, then...
The bricks.
The bricks, it came from another contractor.
Which you arranged for or you worked with? Was he a subcontractor that you hired or arranged for?
It wasn't, he wasn't hired or anything, it was just someone that needed to dump bricks.
So, a random guy came, you allowed a random guy to dump bricks, though? You gave the okay for that?
It's, it was, it's good fill. I, from what I was told from asking other contractors around, that it wasn't, it's not contaminated, it's nothing gonna be bad for the soil, the bricks break down, because it is, in a sense, down the road, natural material.
You didn't, you didn't think that was a wetland when you went out there?
Not at all. Because I also, as well, called in, said, is this wetlands? Because I've dealt with Erin many a times for helping her in other cases when a homeowner did his own tree cutting down, for example, on, or by Highland, Mary J. Fritz, that school had changed. There's that road over there, some gentleman cut down a bunch of trees on a slope that was gonna affect the Quinnipiac River and that was some wetlands violation. I helped her on that job. This was years ago, but I've dealt with her ma, many a times on wetland jobs, not once I think that was wetlands at all. Because also, the gentleman behind them, he inquired about a quote, doing some long driveway between their, behind their property, going around, building some massive barn for car storage or something like that. And he had a map and everything and it showed nothing of wetlands between, it showed a chunk of wetlands between his new driveway he wanted and the back end of their yard, but nothing showing that their two properties where we are extending was wetlands. So, the map that he showed me, the map that they had, when I called in, nothing said wetlands anywhere.
Well, there, there...
Thank you.
It's, there's no question it's an unfortunate circumstance, but why you called the town hall and didn't ask for the wetland department if you thought you had wetlands on the property? Why'd you call planning and zoning and not the wetlands department? There's my, one of my concerns. So, I think this ends up to be, you gotta deal with Siglen, see what, see what kind of map she laid out on the property, or what locations on the property she has.
Yes, I'll do that. I do wanna say that part of the problem that came up here and actually came up again once last week is this, that I, I bet a lot of people in town don't know, is this anymore? This commission was created in nineteen eighty-eight. So, we have good file information from nineteen eighty-eight forward. Their subdivision was create, approved in nineteen seventy-eight. That was done under the auspices of the DEP out of Hartford at the time, up until, from the passing of the Wetland Act in nineteen seventy-two to nineteen eighty-eight, when this commission came into being. So, that portion, we don't have good records on. And even if, I mean, I have a box of old files and pawing through it, eighty-eight, what I did piece together, I was able to piece together over a period of time to get the maps that you guys were given and the owners were given recently, last month. So, I've hauled out the old state files and we'll see what we can do with that. We'll see, it doesn't come up too often, but it did come up for a pool last week. They wanted to know if there was wetlands. Nothing in my file. And it had to, we had to go back into the vault to the state files. But the, oftentimes, I get a lot of these calls. I wanna say that most people don't wanna expend, take the expense of a wetland scientist to go out and tell them if they do or do not have wetland soils on their property. And that's understandable, but that is what one has to do. If we have no records in the office, people will have to, it's unfortunate, but they'd have to, that's the next step. Occasionally, I do have the time to go out on easy sites, to go out and look and say, hey, I can tell there's no wetlands here. It's clear, clear as day, there's no wetlands here. Occasionally, that's, in this case, it would, they've got forested land, it wouldn't have been an easy, I wouldn't have done it, actually, in that situation. I get too many calls. I get about five a week. It'd be, it'd be at least half my week doing that, if I was to do that.
And obviously, if you went out to this site, you would have said you need a soil scientist.
In the back, it was, was obvious swamp. I don't know if I would have recognized it right up to their back, the back of their house, but in the back, yeah, it's swamp, swampy. It was a drought, we had a drought this summer, so it wasn't as swampy as usual.
But, when you say the back of the house, there's, the contractor filled a certain area in back of the house.
The original developer, you mean?
Yes, the original contractor, the builder of the house.
Yes.
And you had documentation, or it looked like that, the wetland had already been filled by that contractor?
Only when I went out there with Jim McManus, the, and the folks here, and when he came out, that was the prospective soil scientist, they might...
But you, what, where'd you get the map with the red line? Engineering helped you?
Oh, that, that we got from the original...
Subdivision map?
Subdivision map from nineteen seventy-eight, from the planning and zoning files.
So, was this, so...
I had nothing in my wetland...
But that is the indication where the wetland was? That red line?
That was, that was indicated in that, right.
And they, this property got a good amount of fill to give a backyard then?
Right, from the original developer, yeah, yeah.
So theoretically, if that's the case, where their lawn ended, should have been wetland right on that edge of there, where their lawn ended.
Right, I think it was.
Okay, well, you just, you didn't make, I didn't understand, that's what you said.
All I'm saying is, I think this is important, too, for anyone watching at home to understand. You have to dig, a soil scientist goes out with an auger. They are required to go down eighteen inches. When I go out, I, I'm not a soil scientist, I don't take a shovel, you know? So, there are some wetlands that are wetlands, deter, wetlands in Connecticut are based on soil type. So, you gotta do the auger, you gotta examine the soil. When we all went out with Jim McManus, he was very patient with us. He did the auger, he explained to us, look at this, look at the different color in the soil. It's a very technical determination sometimes, obviously, in a swamp where your feet are getting wet, you don't have to do that bore, you know it's, you know it's a wetland. But there is a gradation of the wetlands as they go up, upland, so...
I think what you're saying is that it's very easy for a person to buy a piece of property, have no idea there was a wetland on it. That's the description you just gave. You actually gotta go down with an auger and find the modeling in that soil. I, I find it also rather ironic that the information that they sought, they went to the right place, the wrong place, but the right place in the, it happened to be that the information was in the agency that you went to, not in the Wetlands Commission. You didn't have the information, so ironically, you did go to the right place.
Let's see how we make out. All right? Let's see how we make out.
Just moving forward, like you were just saying before, that you need to have a soil scientist, things like that. When homeowners call, I hope, moving forward, that's something that's addressed and that's given as an opportunity. Yes, not everybody's going to go through the steps to get the soil scientist, but some people would, so they need to be informed of that and given that option, moving forward, when they call, and not just told that there's no violations listed or I don't have it in my file, because it's gonna benefit everybody moving forward. It's gonna benefit you, it's gonna benefit the town, the commission, to be informed from the get-go and to be given the opportunity, say, you can get a soil scientist to confirm this and this will give you the definite information that you're looking for, whether or not you can build or not. Because that would be, we wouldn't be here right now if that was from the beginning.
The project, the project would have never occurred if we had that information.
We were looking to move.
As I said, it's, it's an unfortunate circumstance, all the way around. And I believe there have some new procedures being established in the town, for all town employees, when questions are asked, asked that are not their department. Okay?
Okay.
Very good. Well, we're gonna leave the, go ahead Debbie.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the notice of violations on sixty-seven Schoolhouse Road and sixty-nine Schoolhouse Road remain in effect.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Okay. That pretty much wraps up the show for tonight. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All in favor, or second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.